Good morning. Today is Friday, March 23, 2018. This is the Westwood Board of Selectmen. We will begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. The purpose of today's meeting is to review and discuss the current draft of the land disposition agreement between the town of Westwood and Petrusiello Properties, also known as Supreme Development. The review is to provide public view of the terms of a disposition agreement that will be presented to the Finance and Warrant Commission at the public hearing on Monday. This is the next step in what has been a very long process that really began more than 20 years ago when Westwood first acquired property that had been home to a gas station that was set to be a muffler shop. The town stepped in and bought that property that is today a parking lot, a municipal parking lot. In the mid-'90s, the town acquired what was the Islington Center Church, which we now call the Islington Community Center. And so, all of that was done with a long-term view of creating some density and coming up with a holistic approach to the redevelopment of Islington Center. There are seven parcels of land. They are not all contiguous by the developer nor all contiguous by the town. So, in 2015, the town, again, with a long-term view of the development of Islington Center, issued a request for proposals. A developer responded, and since that time, the town, the developer, the residents, the Islington Center Task Force, and many others have studied this. We are at a juncture now where we need to figure out how it is that we trade cost, sell, buy those properties so that we can bring to fruition the idea of a holistic development. I'm going to have Nora Lockney, who's our Director of Economic Development, walk us through where we are. There'll be plenty of opportunity for public input, and with that, I'll turn it over to Nora.
Doug, you can help as well. So, since your last meeting on Monday night...
Introduce yourself.
Oh, sure. Garrett Orismann, town, special town council for Westwood on Finslake University Station and this project as well. The hard ones.
So, since your meeting on Monday night, we've continued negotiating with the developer. We had a meeting on Wednesday, and we went through the draft land disposition agreement that you had seen previously and came to terms on various aspects of that. We have a memo that Garrett explained specifically what the terms are, but we can go through those. The land disposition agreement would allow us to transfer four parcels of town-owned land to Petrusiello Properties and, in return, receive back two parcels of land and a sum of money. The sum of money has not yet been finalized. It would be three separate closings. In the first closing, we would turn over the land on the west side of Washington Street, the municipal parking lot land. That would go to Petrusiello, and we would receive a sum of money back from them at that stage. That would be the first closing. That would enable them to build the part of the project on the west side of Washington Street, which would be the new CVS and the parking lot, and to provide a pad that we could eventually move Wentworth Hall to. When they completed that work, we would have a second closing. At the time of the second closing, we would turn over the parcel where the Islington Library currently sits, and we would receive another sum of money at that time. And I believe we would also receive the town-owned parcels one and two, which is the land on the west side of Washington Street. One parcel would be the land where Wentworth Hall would be relocated to, to help her to be renovated and have an addition put on. And the other parcel would be the open space parcel, what we're calling Town Parcel Two, which is the rear of the current tailor shop lot at Nine School Street. Then, there would be a third closing that would allow, that we would transfer the ICC property to the developer and, in return, receive the third and final sum of money.
Is that one thing? Not insignificant, the second, the first, the second closing, we would also get one affordable housing unit, which would allow us to put 12 affordable housing units on the subsidized housing inventory as of that second closing, which is a significant benefit.
Right. So, I think, yeah, just to explain that a little bit further. So, it's, the existing building has 12 units, two of which are on our subsidized housing inventory. If the town adds a third unit to that, we can count the entire building, each unit, 12 units.
Yeah. It's, the rules for affordable housing are complicated, but any rental project, if 25 percent of the rental project is reserved for affordable housing, you get to count all of those units on your subsidized housing inventory. So, it's as though they're all affordable for purposes of...
For benefits to the town.
And what's the timing that is being considered for Phase Two then? Estimated timing? It's before 2020?
Yes. Yeah. It's about a year out from the start of construction.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, if this is approved at town meeting, and then the articles are approved by the Attorney General's Office, construction could begin in early fall, and so, it would be completed sometime in 2019, late summer, early fall. And at that point, the units would be eligible for listing.
Yeah. If I recall correctly, the draft agreement says, I think, a bit in 90 day, I'm sorry, 120 days from the certificate of the occupancy for the new CVS building, you'll have to have closed on Phase Two. So, and they're not going to want to delay, you know, opening up CVS. So, it should go as fast as possibly can.
So, Garrett, as I, as I read it late last night, a couple of things that still, we don't know that came up about possible contamination of the site, right?
No. The redeveloper did some initial test pits, meaning they didn't actually take samples, but they dug big holes and looked and didn't see any visible sign of contamination near where they want to build. The town, we haven't done anything yet. The way the land disposition agreement is written, we're each going to have a so-called due diligence period in which we can, you know, examine the soils for contamination on the property that, that the town wants to take, and the developer can do the same on...
This is the municipal parking lot today, that property?
Yes. I mean, you could do it on anything, but, but it's the municipal parking lot that people are focused on because of the former Texaco operations. The, I mean, it was a while ago, but as best we know, the Texaco was dealt with and the contamination, you know, removed and the underground storage tanks removed, but...
Mike, our expectation is that the time of the removal, there was testing done.
We do believe that.
Remediation done.
Yes, yes.
But they, well, let's go to the second thing. So, the appraisal, Nora, is supposed to be done mid-April?
Early April. Expecting it in the first week of April.
And we have a really big gap to close, right?
We do. We do.
We're at 1.7, and we need...
1.725 is the original estimate before we did any concept plans. Our estimate for the concept plans for redoing Wentworth Hall, moving it, renovating it, adding an addition, range from 3.5 to 3.8 million, depending on which scheme we use.
And so, you know, the biggest fear that I have going forward is it's an awful big gap to close. And what happens if the appraisal comes back at like 2.25 or 2 and 1/2? We're still 1.3 behind what we need to do to do the project. Where does that leave everything that we've done so far at this point in time to go to town meeting?
That, that leaves us open for discussion on what we want to do. What we know is that the properties that we own now have a capital liability associated with them. So, we either have to find the funds to continue use of those buildings, or we have to put the funds into another project. We're hoping we get as much as possible in this proposal to allow us to do that without spending additional town funds. But we won't know that until the appraisal comes in. When it comes down to it, we're selling property. The property has a concrete value. We cannot expect to receive twice the value of what that property is. So, at, in the end, that will be the limiting factor. So, what we have is property we own that has a value to it and that has a liability to it. A capital needs liability. So, we'll need to look at that after we receive the appraisal.
And there are two liabilities to the property that we own. The first liability is that we have code and, and maintenance work that needs to be done of a significant amount, especially in the ICC, but also in Wentworth Hall. But in addition to that, to make that property usable, because if we're going to keep it, at that point, we have to really deal with what we've been living with, which was a church and a hall and other aspects of the building that were, were constructed to be a church, and now we use them for other reasons. And we did an estimate, didn't we, of what that would cost to make that usable space?
We did. So, the estimate to take the ICC building and not just, not to shore it up, which is what the 1.7 million does, the estimate to actually make it more usable space, and it still doesn't do everything, but it repartitions the youth and family services, it adds an elevator, it air-conditions the building, it makes the minimum usefulness improvements. That's 4.9 million.
You know, we can't be spending 4.9 million on a 50-year-old building.
And we would still have, we would still have an inefficient building.
Right. Right. I feel like with the ICC right now, for youth and family services, it's make-do space.
It is. It's space that we purchase to hold on to, to have a way of redeveloping Islington in the best manner we could. We're at the point where we feel we can do that. But we never intended for that to be a town building long into the future.
And I'll add that we did pay, because there's some controversy, some, seems to be some misunderstanding. That was not a gift. That was, we paid $500,000 for that property at the time that the church closed up.
In 2004?
Yeah. Do you want a Finance Commission, weren't you?
No, no, I was on the board.
Board, yeah.
2004.
So, I mean, the whole reason that we're meeting this morning is because town meeting is upon us, right?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Can we postpone town meeting by a month or so? I mean, to get the numbers and be able to present it to the public, and the FinCon is to say, here are the solid numbers. We have to bridge this gap. Or if we're at 3.8 and it comes in at 2.5, then we tell the residents, you know what? It costs 1.3 of town money to do this. It seems to me that we're, we're just throwing out a number and saying, it might work, but we don't know yet.
I think with any complicated land deal, this is what happens in the, in the final months, right?
Right. But we're not, we don't even know what it's worth. The town doesn't know what it's worth.
I don't know that we can postpone town meeting. I think it's in our charter.
Well, can you, technically, you can, because it is in our charter. You have to go through. We did this once. We had a failed override one year, the week before town meeting. We then need to make serious budget adjustments, and the way it works is you go to town meeting. You put the word out that town meeting will not occur, and you go to, you have a, an opening without a quorum.
You continue it to another date.
And continue it to the next meeting, to the next night.
Kind of like, Board of Directors, yeah, like a Board of Directors meeting, continue not quorum and continue to turn on the day.
That's what we did at Zavarian Brothers one year.
It happened to be at Zavarian Brothers High School. Yes, that year, we had a, that was a long time.
It's not done that often, but it, it has been done in the past.
30 years, it's been done once.
Yeah. I mean, I just think this is such an important thing that we should really think about that. I mean, it's only a month. It's not like we're postponing it to the fall. It'll still be before school gets out, and it'll give us hard numbers to be able to convince the FinCon and the public that this is the best thing for us to do. I mean, I think it's hard just to say, because if, we're not, we're not talking, you know, 2 and 1/2 to 3 and 1/2. We're talking 1.7 to 3.5 at the minimum and maybe 3.8. I mean, that's, that's an awful big gap to close, and we don't know anything about the contamination. Perhaps in the meantime, we do a sample, you know, of the land that we're taking, because I know it's in here. He's responsible. If he takes that, the lot where the, he's responsible for the 21E issues that come up. On our land, we need to make sure that before we dig a hole, that we're not going to have to spend $500,000 to take out 12 feet of dirt and then find a place to dispose of it. I mean, it just sounds to me that going forward, that the unknowns could be a deal breaker all the way across the board. And at least, at least we know if it's going to happen, and he wants to know too. You know, we need to know if that, where that $500,000 is coming up for, or $200,000 extra, which is below the 3.5 and the 3.8. So, now, we're looking at four? I mean, I just think that there are too many variables at this point.
So, what I would say is that this has been subject to more public meetings than any project that any of us could probably think of. I think you're giving this sense of false hope that you're going to have an exact answer for every little thing.
I think we will.
You do? Okay. I mean, you're on the town's negotiating team.
Right. Right.
That's, that's your confidence level?
Yes, that, at least we will know where we are before we go to town meeting. And before we actually, I mean, the FinCon would probably have to hold one more public hearing on this sometime in May before we go to June.
And do we think they will?
They have in the past. That I do remember.
And you'll advocate for that to them?
Yes. I mean, I think, how can I go and, how, if I'm going to stand up at town meeting and say, this is a good thing, and here's why, I need to be able to explain myself. And then, people can vote whichever way they think is right. And they may, they may agree with us, they may not agree with us. But at least I'll be able to stand up and say, here's why it's a good thing, here's what we're getting, and, and this is why we should do it or not do it. And people will have at least the information to make the good decision.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think, we, we believe we're going to know everything by mid-April, that we're possible. I mean, assuming we actually go out...
Everything we can know.
Everything we can know. Right.
We won't have, we won't have designs.
Right. Yeah.
We won't begin our design work until we go and have an approved project. We're not going to spend money on design that may not happen. So, the cost of the work that the town has to do will remain unknown until we actually have the architectural designs prepared.
Best we have at this point is, is best estimates on the building, but we don't have anything on what the value of the ICC is and how much the town really needs to put in to be able to make this project happen, if anything.
Well, we do, we do know what it would cost to get us to code.
We know an estimate that we have for a particular design, yes. But it has to be bid out. It's a public bid project. So, until we actually have construction drawings and can put them out to bid, we don't have a firm price.
And the hottest thing, and I know Nora, you throw out the 1.7 is what it would cost. But my, my limited valuation of this is once, if the estimated value of the property, the ICC is, I see 3 million, right, or without anything, just being done, is 3 million. And we get to 1.7, and we, we're over 30 percent of the value. We trigger, now we have to, by law, make it a buy.
The 1.7 takes into account that if we replace the roof, we have to make the bathrooms handicapped accessible, and we have to make some other changes. We bring it as close as we can to meet in code, but there are some codes it doesn't meet, even with that amount of cash put in, that we would have to hope that we receive bearings on.
Right. And before we go too far down that path, we're talking about pouring millions of dollars into a 14,000 square foot building that's 50 years old, that is incredibly inefficient.
It has 11,000 square feet of useful area or area that is used. It's a 15,000 square foot building.
So, it would be the worst real estate investment in the history of, of Westwood and probably the state of Massachusetts.
And I may not disagree with you, but I just think that you need to be able to present that in solid numbers.
I feel like we're trying to give out a lot of false hope and just kick the can down the road.
I, I think it's information that in order to be able to secure votes, you need to be able to provide to the public so that they can come back and say, yes, no, and here's, give them the facts so that they can make the right decision.
Okay.
Mike, can you sort of give a sequence of events with the course that this would be on if it went to the regularly scheduled town meeting date versus what the course of events would be if we did do what Mike has suggested, and that is postpone the meeting until June? And it's postpone, it's continue the meeting into June and do the town's business in June along with this. What, what, because I want to understand what the real benefits are to the additional time, because it sounds like it makes sense, but what do we gain in that four weeks, five weeks?
Well, I think one of the things that we gain is that, next week, we're going to meet with the Finance Commission, and here's the material we have. And we haven't closed the loop on exactly how the funding will be handled, what the funding, what the developer's willing to pay toward, toward the cost, and getting that information not only to the Finance Commission, but to the community at large over the course of the next month. It's a short timeframe. Because the Finance Commission issues its book. If it issues its book after the meeting they hold next Monday, it won't have relevant information where it is that a lot of people look. But if they were to delay it until their next, until a subsequent public hearing in May where we have all the information that we need, then they would issue a book that, that would be complete and comprehensive. I think that's, that, I think that's the major advantage that we have by, by pushing it forward to May, to June rather than holding it in May.
I, I tend to agree. I think we need the extra time.
I mean, it, look, we've spent two years doing this project to rush it through without a 30-day and to have an appraisal and go back to the developer and say, this is what our appraisal says. You at least have to meet this?
So, what I will say is that throughout the course of this project, we first heard apartments. It was apartments. Apartments are the bane of this project. We just could never support a project if we have apartments. So, we switched it, the developer switched it to condos. So, then that issue was put to bed. And then, it was the size of the CVS. Well, first, it was the drive-through, right? So, we put housing to bed. We could never support a project that has a drive-through in Islington. So, the developer took the drive-through off the table. So, then, it was the size of the CVS. So, we can, we can kick the can down the road, but if we think we're going to get to a point where we've appeased everybody, I think we're selling false hope.
John, with all due respect, I think you're missing the point. I'm not asking about a change in his design or CVS with or without the drive-through. That's going to be up to the planning board. What I'm saying is, if, if we're going to trade four parcels of land, especially the ICC, which is probably our biggest asset, I think we, as the town, need to know what it's worth before we go to the developer and say, he's offered 1.7, which is his first offer, which no one takes, takes the first offer, right? So, you get, but we can't even counter because we don't have an estimated value. And it's not that we couldn't do it, but it has to be close in time to our transaction because value goes up. So, if we did it two years ago, it clearly has increased as Islington increased. The value of that land has increased. So, to do the town a favor, we need to have that number. I'm not saying change anything. That's going to happen with the planning board anyway. We have no control over that, although as the petition, joint petitioner, we have some information. But I just think...
So, I guess, I guess what we really disagree is calling the ICC our greatest asset. I, I view the ICC as a liability.
Okay. But it's a piece of land. How about that?
It's a piece of land.
If you don't call it a building, call it a piece of land, right? And what is that land worth?
What happens to the planning board's sequence of action with what we're discussing?
Well, the planning board has a special permit hearing before it. It needs to go forward and complete its permit review and make a decision on that permit. They are looking to you to hear what the land disposition agreement looks like that you have negotiated. And they are also looking to hear that there's authority for you to sign that land disposition agreement. So, their decision would be, would have a condition that requires the approval of the land disposition agreement following a town meeting vote, but they would at least need to understand what you're proposing. They're likely to be asked to vote on the application at the April 10 meeting. That's the schedule that they're on right now.
And that doesn't need to change.
And we expect to have, no, we expect to have...
I mean, they need to do their work, whatever it may be.
Appraisal before then. So, I think you would have all the answers. Really, the only thing that we, that is happening before we receive that appraisal is the Finance and Warrant Commission has to consider the articles and decide if they're interested in moving forward with the articles.
And they're scheduled to do that Monday.
Monday and Tuesday. They have hearings both nights.
The appraisal's going to be the value of the land given its highest and best use. So, so, it's not going to take into account the liabilities associated with the ICC.
It has nothing to do with fixing it up. It has to do with what is that worth at its best value.
Right.
We need it, we need it to come in a lot higher.
Right. Generally, banks don't, don't look at appraisals that are more than six months prior to their loan date. So, generally, that six-month period is the currency period that you need to meet.
Right.
Right. From a negotiating standpoint, though, if I was the developer, I know that for the town, in order to get to a usable place, it's going to cost a lot of money.
Right.
Right? So, that's, that's, that's a point in the equation.
Yes. Right.
But we could still present to Finance Commission Monday night, get them up to date on everything as we're discussing here, and a summation of all the work that's been done.
Absolutely. That's right. And with the understanding that we will have more information in early April, long before town meeting, about what that dollar amount is that we will be receiving from the developer. Nothing else is expected to happen other than receive that appraisal. That really affects the terms of the land disposition agreement. Then, there's the design of the, of the property. There's one question that's still open on the design of the property, and that has to do with the size of the CVS and whether or not to have a drive-through.
Right.
The planning board will have a decision on that also likely in, in early April. So, I would say by April 12, we will have information on the amount of money that the land is worth, on the amount of money that the developers willing to include in the land disposition agreement, and on the full picture of what the project looks like.
So, we'll need them to agree to another meeting, the Finance Commission, because they won't take a vote.
Well, they can either agree to another meeting, or they can put a dollar amount into their motion based on everything that we know now.
But it's kind of a false number because we don't know. I mean, it's, whatever number they're putting, they're just, that's only an estimate, a best estimate.
But they could put, they could put a number in and then potentially reconsider that before the actual town meeting.
Yeah. No, we did it for the fire station.
And I, I don't actually even think that's necessary. I think the number that goes in there is based on the estimate of what the cost will be for the renovations of Wentworth Hall. That's the number that's in the motion. That's not dependent on the appraisal, and that's not dependent on the planning board's vote. We know that now. It's somewhere between 3.5 and 3.8 million.
We just don't know how they're paying for it.
Exactly. So, they can still make their motion. They still have the, the number in the motion. They have to decide whether or not they think that's something that they'd like to support under different circumstances, under the condition that we receive full payment for the developer to cover that, or under the condition that the appraisal is not as high as that amount and we receive some lesser funds.
But if we introduce a postponement or a continuation of town meeting, I think they're less likely to vote a position at this point. They may hear, but they probably would not.
That's probably true.
I mean, if I were sitting on the Finance and Warrant Commission, I'd like to know the exact numbers, you know, before I vote on it. And as a member, all I'm asking is, I'm not asking to do anything and even kick this down the road except for 30 days where we have hard numbers to send out to the public and say, listen, it came, the appraisal came in at 2.5. It costs us 3.5 to move it. A million dollars is coming from the town, not from the developer.
Yeah. And I just don't think, I don't think that the Finance Commission is going to take a vote. I don't think. I mean, maybe I'm wrong. If, if the board is not, if the Selectmen aren't aligned?
I think if the Finance Commission was asked to take a vote now, they would have to take a vote based on the worst-case scenario, which is that the developer gives us $1,725,000 and the project costs us 3.5 million. I think that's what they would have to be voting on at this point, with the understanding that that 1.725 would be increased, but we just don't know what amount it will be increased to until we receive that appraisal. So, if they're asked to vote, and if they, if they intend to vote on Tuesday, I think they're voting on that, on the number that we already have, with the hope of more money coming.
I don't like those lines.
Right. Right. Because we don't, we don't expect that that'll be the final number.
We don't expect that'll be the final number.
So, I wouldn't want them to vote on that. I don't, I don't want there to be a negative vote on, on a false number.
No. Right.
Yeah. That's, that's my issue. You understand?
What do you recommend we do?
Like, I think, I think that we would have to...
I wanted to ask Mike what he recommends.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
What do you recommend we do?
I would agree that a postponement for a month to give this thing more time, uh, makes enormous sense. I think that everybody, especially the public that are going to be coming to town meeting, need to have a full picture of what, what it is that we're talking about. And I think what we, what we, we may be able to give them a full picture, but we won't be able to give them a full picture and advance a town meeting so that they can digest it. And so I think, I think we're better off having a, a public hearing on or around the 1st of May and having a, having a pu- public discussion during that month, and then having a June, 1st of June-
Fourth.
June 4th, uh, town meeting.
Well, we've got to check availability of space.
Yeah.
It, it, it worked, I can tell you the year that we had to do it because of the budget, um, crisis that we, we confronted, uh, the month was sufficient time to get information to the general public, uh, that was sufficient. I think it, I think it actually, if I remember right, that we actually followed up that town meeting with another, another, uh, uh, override of a much lesser amount to, to not make the cuts that we had to make. So it, it was a complicated year, and there's a lot of information that needed to be shared in May, and it got shared. And I think that that would be the advantage.
Okay, so in terms of process, a couple of things need to happen. We need to request that the Finance Commission meet again in mid-April, right? We need to reset the town meeting date. And the board has the authority to do that, or is it the moderator?
Uh, the board and the moderator, I guess, would be the, the two people that would discuss, but I, it is the board of selectmen that gets to set the date. The moderator presides over the meeting. It's the board of selectmen.
I mean, what do you, what do you think, Nora? I just, I do think going to Finance Commission on Monday, they're going to look to us and say, well, where, where are you? Right? And there's not alignment here.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a missing piece of information. We are waiting for the appraisal.
And I, honestly, I think it's probably one of the most important pieces. You know, whether or not it's 12,015 or 9, 9,500 with a drive-through, that's up to the planning board. But as far as sitting in the public and say, this is what it's getting and this is what it's costing us, I think that's only basic information that the public needs to make the decision. I mean, I don't care if you're for the project or against the project, but you need to know the facts before you can make an intelligent decision. And, look, no one's worked on this longer and harder than I have, and I can tell you that, you know, I, I want all the information to be available.
I just, yeah, but, okay, I'll stop. Um, so where do we go from here, Mike?
Well, um-
Take a vote? Do we need to take a vote?
If you're going to take a vote to postpone the meeting, you should take a vote to do that, um, you know?
For a date to, to be determined.
To be determined, yeah. Yeah.
I'll second.
Oh, I haven't made a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
But I know you're there. I know you're there.
I make a motion that we postpone town meeting.
Well, I'd call it a continuation of town meeting.
Okay, that we continue town meeting from the, uh, May date to a later date, perhaps later May or, uh, early June, depending on availability.
Of town dates.
To be determined.
To be determined.
So we actually, so the, so we keep, so we, in essence, though, we're canceling that May date, right?
So what happens is-
That won't convene.
We have to convene.
We convene?
A, a non-quorum group.
And continue to another date.
Eight people, town clerk, whatever moderator, convene at the location and say, we do not have a quorum. Go through the formality of saying, we will continue this meeting to-
Whatever the new date is.
Okay.
X-date, X-time, location, and then adjourn that.
Close it, yeah, adjourn.
It's, it's a procedural-
Yeah, and a lot of companies do it. If you ever, you know, even get those things for your-
Well, if you have charters-
Investments, now they say, you know, if there's not a quorum at this date, it would be continued to a new date.
If you have a charter that describes a date, but you know that's not a date that works, it's a formality to make it a, because charters can be dated, it can be a lot of things that can lead to it. So I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any discussion from the public?
Um, Jennifer Brawer, Montmorel, Hillsborough Road. Does that affect the swearing-in of the moderator?
It'll be postponed until the end of town meeting.
The swearing-in?
Yeah. Yes, so, so no one takes their title. So if you're elected to a position, you do, you're sworn in at a town meeting, but you do not officially begin your, uh, job duties until the end of town meeting, till the close of town meeting.
Everything is postponed.
So even if you're sworn in on first day and the meeting was two nights, you don't take your job until the second.
So there is, there's going to be a town meeting, but then there's really not going to be a town meeting until June?
Correct.
Correct. Everything is postponed until the end of that town meeting.
Basically, it's a continuance is what it is.
Okay. And, and on the, um, CVS, the warrant article for the expansion from 10,015, so that's still a warrant article that's being presented to FinCom?
As far as we know, we have not heard otherwise. That's a planning board article?
That is.
So they, they would have to make that decision, but as far as I could tell, we have not been asked to remove it.
They did make the decision to go forward with that article, to continue reviewing the application, and if they decide that it's not needed, to recommend against approval of that at town meeting, or to amend it if it's needed at a lesser number.
Okay.
But they did discuss that at their last hearing.
So they're keeping it, the option open?
I don't know if they're keeping it, yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Would anybody like to take a 15-minute break to think about comments or questions?
We're going to give you a microphone, Christine.
Yeah, just because of the recording.
Just because it's on television. So smile, smile for the camera.
That was your angle.
I'm going to have a call for Mike.
Don't pull too hard.
You're not getting paid, Nora. You're not having a call for Mike.
I can roll up.
There you go.
Thanks, Christine.
Just, just so the recording can grab it.
Christine Pervatera, 16 Dean Street, Islington. I, I just want to comment on a comment, um, made during this, um, presentation, to state that renovating the ICC would most likely be the worst land deal in the state, something along that line.
That was my comment, yes.
I, I find that offensive because Islington Center, the core of Islington Center is the ICC. That building might need renovations, but the structure of that is so iconic for past residents. People driving from Norwood can see it. That is the core of Islington Center. And to just treat it like any other piece of property is offensive. That's all.
No offense, Ben, but it's a 50-year-old building. It's 11,000 square feet.
I don't, you-
To think that the, well, I, you, you commented, and I have the right to comment. To think that we would have the residents expend millions of dollars on 11,000 square feet, to me makes no sense. But we'll have to agree to disagree.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, do you mind just, only because the recording doesn't pick up?
I'll have to get a wireless.
Yeah. Sorry.
Sorry, no problem. Thanks. Ellen Rawlings, 86 Green Hill Road. Um, just a question, and, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but I just want to understand. I know that appraisals have a shelf life, because I had my house appraised when I went to buy it, but it sounds like the shelf life is six months, and the schedule for when town meeting's happening and the FinCom hearings have been on the books for a while. So I just kind of want to understand why the appraisal's coming in so late.
Do you want me to do it, Nora? I can do it. I can do it. So part of the reason that the appraisal is late is because the developer came to us after 1.725 and said, I cannot give you anymore. We assumed that it was just a starting point. He says, I cannot finance the project through any bank based on my appraisal. So if you want more money from me, get your own appraisal, because that's all we're giving you is 1.725. And so that, we've decided, okay, we're getting more money from you, we are getting an appraisal. And that's basically, in a nutshell, what's happened.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing done. So we've had a motion, we've had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, done. Okay, so we have taken a vote to-
Continue.
Continue town meeting for a date to be determined in early June. So we will not be presenting this at, or we will be updating, we will be updating the Finance Commission on Monday.
Yes, I think you go forward with the hearing that you're going to have on Monday. You give them all the information you have today.
And get feedback.
And get feedback.
Give them a chance.
I mean, you don't cut off the, just because we put it out a month, we want to keep the discussion going. I will call the chairman after this meeting and tell her of, of the decision. I'll inform her that the board would like to have her schedule another public hearing at some point that can be announced on Monday night, so everybody in attendance can know, okay, this, we're having this public discussion tonight, but there will be a subsequent one on the, when the final information is, is known, and so I'm sure she'll go along with that.
Well, just out of curiosity, will we know availability before Monday night for another date? Yeah.
Well, you also have to check with the town clerk, the moderator, and anyone else who's, needs to be scheduled.
So we can give them at least, this is the date where they can-
Yeah, we'll look at, we'll also look at conflicting-
High schools.
Meetings and, you know, all that other stuff that-
And it's unlikely, but the, the Finance Commission could say, we're going to take action, based on what they know.
I think, I think knowing that the board of selectmen has decided to move the date along, they would, they shouldn't. They, they really should wait.
Nora, anything?
Yeah, on that note, the article, one of the two articles has been revised. So do you want to review that revised article language? Because I think that on Monday night, the FinCom ought to see the articles, the, the language that you're using. All right? So the, um, the first article, which was the land disposition, has now changed. That's as you approved it on Monday night. The second article was reviewed by bond counsel, and it now reads, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to pay costs of designing, relocating, constructing, originally equipping and furnishing a relocated and expanded Wentworth Hall, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, such facility to be located on property across the, across from the current location of the Islington Library, and to determine whether the amount shall be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto." So that is the draft article that bond counsel is recommending that you send to the FinCom. And then they've also provided a motion then for the FinCom to consider. And that reads, "That the town appropriates $3,500,000 to pay cost of designing, relocating, constructing, originally equipping and furnishing a relocated and expanded Wentworth Hall, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL, Chapter 44, Section 7, Part 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. The amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of amounts realized by the town upon the sale of associated properties, net of any transaction costs associated therewith. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such cost by a like amount." So essentially, it's saying-
Can you repeat that? No.
Essentially, the motion would allow for the town to borrow up to 3.5 million dollars, and that amount would be reduced by whatever money we receive from the town, from the developer.
So it provides flexibility.
Yeah.
Right. So, so that language is available. And on Monday night, the FinCom will hear where the project stands, and they will hear all the parts that are in place. The two parts that are still in motion are the appraisal, that determines how much money comes back, to reduce the amount of borrowing necessary, and the question of whether the CVS is the larger one or the smaller one. Those, that's all that remains in flux at this point.
To the extent that the planning board is looking at the CVS still, um, that impacts, their decision will ultimately impact the economics of this transaction.
It does to a certain extent, and that depends on the deal that the developer has with CVS. At this point, the dollar amount of the deal is the same for the larger building or the smaller building with the drive-through. So, and the value, the tax value is based on the income of the property. So at this point, it seems to be-
So he's still working on that.
Yes. At this point, it seems to be the same.
Yeah, that's-
As Mike said, that's a planning board decision.
Right, but that's the other moving part is, you know, he doesn't know what number CVS is going to come back to him yet, because he doesn't know what size the building is.
Right, right.
And if it, you know, if it picks something different, then CVS will be back at the table saying, you know.
Right, if there's a third option, if CVS isn't as we've seen in neither of those designs, that will affect the price.
And that's what, that's the third moving part, that, you know, we have no control over.
CVS could just say, we just want to stay put.
I think that's highly unlikely.
Yeah.
So when will the decision be made about the size of the CVS and the-
Well, the final decision on the special permit is expected on April 10th, but I expect at their next meeting, which is scheduled for April 4th, they will have more discussion on whether they like the smaller building or the larger building, the drive-through, or no drive-through. They're waiting for their engineers to review that. So that, those plans came to the planning board on the day of the meeting. That was the first they saw them. Their engineers have not had a chance to look at the circulation.
Yeah, and I, sorry, Nora. The biggest issue, you know, was then, is how could the drive-through even work? Does that make School Street two-way, you know, you know, to in and out, and, or is it a no-left turn? And the, um, traffic engineers are looking at that to decide if it can work and how would it work, and then be able to present it so the neighbors can then understand the design and whether or not it would work. So.
I think it's important to understand that there are three elements that have really affected the, the developer's ability to provide us with the money we need to create the building. So, uh, I think it was less stringent on the 1.75 when he was doing rental, but he's now doing condo. And so the, the, the economics are different, and the rentals would have been worth more, so he would have had more money to devote to us. I think the size of the CVS is going to impact that, too, because, um, and, and the drive-through, the, both of those factors affect the lease that CVS is willing to do so that if we were to get the size down and get rid of the, the drive-through, then, you know, the significantly less money available on the table. And then the third thing is the MMO. We have committed to maintaining the MMO in the area. MMO, however, because it's a not-for-profit status, which doesn't have a lot of money in, in a bank account, and there's liabilities, have just basically said they do not intend on having more than one-year lease, and they would like it to be as close or at least as equal to what the town is, is currently leasing to them. That's a financial restriction, again, on, on, on the amount of money the developer is willing to give. So the developer has put himself out there, but we have, we have participated in that in trying to reach some sort of understanding that, that's acceptable for the comments that we've been, we've been hearing from the community as this process has gone forward. So, you know, it, you just need to understand that there's give and take here, um, that's being laid out on all sides.
There's, there's been a lot of give and take, so I want to correct myself, because I misspoke. Affordable housing would actually be a condition of the first closing, so they would take care of that before they even started on this project.
Oh, not the phase two?
Not the second. That, we, we did move that up. That was a lot of the negotiations that took back, that took place on Wednesday. We moved that up, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Because I was worried that timing wouldn't work.
Yeah.
We want to.
And there's, the outside date for the first closing, as this is drafted, it's not signed, but as it's currently drafted, is January 1st, 2019.
You know, as I was reading this last night, the other thing that came to mind, which we really haven't discussed yet, is the possibility that as part of the negotiations, his two in the ski building could perhaps temporarily become forty, you know, the?
Forty B.
Forty B, if you will.
Affordable.
Yeah, affordable housing.
Need the affordable, yeah.
In those two units, to get us over the 2020, and even if he did it for, say, a five-year window, you know, that we would have those added to our inventory, maybe? You know, just to add those two extras in the meantime, while he develops the ICC building, his mixed-use building. There's a possibility that we can negotiate that ahead of time, because based on the rents that we heard, he's already in that category. You know, so that could be something that we could still add in the next month as a possibility to, if we'll make it that much more, you know, enticing.
Yeah.
Because we're all worried, we're all worried about, you know, 2020 and whether or not we have enough affordable housing in town, so.
From what, his counsel, redevelopment's counsel, has said he read this four times, which is probably about how many times you have to read it to put it all together. It's very complicated to understand it, yes. But, but most of it's in place, in good shape, but some of those things about, you know, whether there's additional in-kind consideration we may receive through this deal, I mean, some of those substantive terms about how we best protect the town can still change a little bit, particularly once we see what the appraisal numbers come out at.
Man, I've read it three times, and I'm trying to figure out, you know, we're almost getting to the red lines to be able to figure out what has changed since the last time, so.
Okay.
We have other business.
I know, we have other business.
I'm okay with the language. Is that, Nora, do you need us to vote on that language?
Yes.
You need to vote on?
The language.
Yeah, so that we can present that to the FinCom on Monday night.
So that's, that's the warrant article language?
That is the warrant article language. The first part I read, the second part was the motion. So you don't need to approve the motion. That's the motion that's being recommended to the FinCom. You need to approve the article.
You have two articles.
There were two articles. The first article has not changed. You voted on that article on Monday night. The second article replaces the article you voted on, I think it was Article R. So you approved Article Q and R on Monday night. This takes Article R, removes the one you originally approved, and replaces it with this one that was recommended by bond counsel.
Okay. Christine, you have something?
Yes, Christine Proberter, I guess. I just have one comment. As a resident for almost 40 years, I.
My memory is that anytime there's been a new development, whether it be 40B or something similar, like this affordable housing now, it's been new construction. Cedar Hill, Chase Estates, everything, it's been new construction. So what will be the new construction for the affordable housing? If, if it goes forward at the ski stop?
Okay. My understanding is it does not have to be new construction. It can take, anyone can take their apartment building and convert it to affordable housing, almost by right if, if you're, if you're under the 10%. So they, they have the right by state law, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nora, that they, that it doesn't have to be new construction. It can be old, if you will, existing units that can be automatically added to the inventory.
Just like all the Westwood Housing, Housing Authority units, they're all existing units that were converted for affordable housing.
Well, all of the apartment units.
All the apartment units, yeah.
So Christine, we're in a, we're in a, an interesting place, because Westwood had been as high as 13% on its affordable housing portfolio. We have lost some units. There was not a deed restriction. A private developer bought a certain apartment complex and removed the affordable housing restriction, which he had the right to do. So we want to ensure, like all municipalities, that we stay above 10%. The 40B is a state, is a chapter of the mass general laws. And if we fall below that 10%, it gives the developers more of a right to apply directly to the Commonwealth, for the right to build affordable housing in a municipality. So in essence, the municipality loses some control over its own development within its town, right? Am I, am I, am I on the right track?
Significant control.
Significant control.
Just to add to that, you could be, if you're subject to 40B, you could be four or five units short of your 10%. Developer could come in with a 200-unit project, you're stuck with it. You know, it's, it's a little bit draconian, but that's.
So we're in this, we're in this kind of, the timing of this development is just buttressing ups, up against 2020, where we next have to take a snapshot of our housing stock and what is affordable. And we're on the cusp. We think we're going to be okay, but we're, we're really close. And so having this developer, in this development, work with us to help us on that problem, again, it's, it's all an exchange, it's all a bargain, is a benefit. And that's why this discussion, that's why the affordable housing discussion has really merged somewhat into this. So it doesn't have to be new, and we could have, to Michael's point, him take some existing properties and restrict them as affordable, not deed restrict them, so at some point later he could remove the restriction, correct? So it doesn't have to be new. Does that, does that help?
Off the record, I will, I've had this discussion before, not in committee, with Nora, so.
Okay.
Well, for anyone who does, who's not afraid of 40B, they should drive up and down Needham Stretch and look at that giant 40B that's going in right off the highway, of which Needham had no control because the developer owned the land already.
And they were significantly below 10%.
They fell below.
You'd be one unit below.
Yeah, and now they have four, what is it, 400? 440?
Very large.
My question then is, affordable, okay? So is the rent going to be the same under this affordable, special formula?
Right, there's a formula for it.
Okay. Rent going to be set the same by the developer for the new units near the Islington Pizza as these older units?
The Department?
Are old.
Department of Housing and Community Development approves the rents for all listed properties. There's a ma, there's a maximum, a floor you can't exceed, you can't go beyond that. That's what the developer is allowed to do, but they will send, set rent according to what the properties are worth. It may be very well be that the, that the cost of those, the rentals for a small apartment are significantly less than the maximum allowed by DHCD.
Currently are.
Right, those are currently leased for lesser amounts.
Any other comments, questions? Sure, go ahead, Ellen.
Sorry, just, it's quick.
Okay.
Do we have a sense of how many units we would be short in 2020? I know there's some.
We don't, we don't believe, as we said today, that we're short.
Okay.
But where, we, we were at 13%, we lost quite a few, and as we drive around Westwood, you know, what have we seen go up? Right, so that doesn't help.
We are not short today, but just to be clear, if we do not add more units to the subsidized housing inventory come 2020, we will be short. There's no doubt about it.
Yeah, that, do we have a sense of how many we would be short?
It's a moving target.
It's a moving target.
Every, every new house that goes up adds another one.
Small number, though. It's a small number that we can work towards.
It's small, it's very small. And so, you know, and, and although it sounds like really simple, right, you should have a denominator and a numerator and come out with a percentage. And what, what has happened, though, is there have been regulatory changes, there have been some statutory changes. When long-term care was developed at University Station, those units did not count as residential housing. They did not count as part of the formula. They now do, right? So we've got to find a way to, to mitigate those units as well, which we have a warrant article going forward to, to appropriate some money to correct that deficiency.
Right, to get that number down.
But this would also help.
Yeah, I think the important thing to keep in mind is, is at least, as long as the law stays the same, if, if you are at your 10% when 2020 rolls around, you're pretty much good for the next 10 years, because they don't, they don't, they don't do the denominator again for a 10-year period. And, and so, you know, the housing stock in Westwood might grow a lot by conventional housing, but you're not necessarily going to have to match it at a affordable level.
But we don't want to lose our eye on that.
Right. Even if you dry on it.
And, and that's exactly what we've been doing over the last 10 years, watching it and trying to make sure that we're working projects in the right direction. We amended all of our special permit regulations to require 15% affordable housing, so that those new special permit projects not only make up for their own housing that they create, but add to our subsidized housing inventory to, to make up for, by right, housing development. So we have been watching this, but I think it's important to note that it takes a long time to get a project through and get units listed on the SHI. And that's one of the reasons why this is the project on the horizon that gives us the ability to do that, and it is extremely unlikely that there will be another project on the horizon in an appropriate timeframe to get the number of units we may need to stay above 10%.
So could we create a zoning change that would up it from 15% to, say, 25% and then say that they have to have a certain amount perpetuity? Would that be legal?
If you do a deed restriction, I mean, that, that's what, the 15% has a deed restriction. To go to 25%, though, the, the issue's going to become, you're not going to get a developer to do a project.
The economics.
The economics won't work for them. Right? So, so to, to have it all kind of, and, and the philosophy in the law, too, is that it's kind of segregated throughout your, your housing stock, so we don't want to be targeting it, you know, solely in one place. We do have some developments, though, that are as high as, what is Cedar Hill?
So we have some developments, those are negotiated developments where we got 25% of the units, but in a case like Cedar Hill or Chase Estates, while 25% of the units are affordable, that doesn't mean that the whole development can be counted, because it's not rental housing. But yes, that some of those are above 50%. Highland Glen 1 is 100% affordable. Highland Glen 2 is 25% affordable. So we have, we have many different options, but those were not, in those cases, it made sense for the type of development we had. So our special permit regulations require 15% for special permit housing, but there's plenty of by-right housing that has 0% affordability requirement, and that's what we need to make up for.
But your thinking is correct, to how do we, how do we move further ahead than just the 15%? Sometimes it's unique to the property, and we can get more. We try to.
There's always a way.
Yeah, well, we work towards it. Right.
Finding that way.
And that's what we spend a lot of time.
What is a problem.
Correct.
And, and that's, that's what we've done here. So the requirement is 15%, but we've gotten 12 units for 18 new units, so we have gone well above the 15%.
But realize we're up against 2020, right? So we don't, we don't have a lot. Any other thoughts, comments, questions? Does anybody want to take a break and think about questions? Okay, hearing done. So I just want to, let's just be clear about what our plan is for Monday night. So we're presenting to the FinCom where we are on the Islington development. We have an existing warrant article we're going to present to them.
Two, two warrant articles.
Okay. Wait, are we? Are we all in agreement?
I won't be there, yeah.
Okay. Are we all in agreement on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so we don't need any other further votes on that. That's our plan.
We do have to vote on the language that Nora has.
Oh, so we voted on one.
We're replacing it with Nora's new language.
Okay.
Right, so you haven't, you haven't voted on that yet. You voted on one Monday night.
Do I have that?
It's right here.
On the new language?
No, that's what we were going to print before the meeting started.
You vote?
They don't need to.
Yeah, I mean, Nora read it. I'm willing to make, I'm willing to make the motion.
You don't have it there. You don't have it there, but I can, I can give you the iPad, just let me call it up.
I know, but we should, we should. But we should read it as a motion, though. I mean, I'll read it and make the motion.
You can read it, but you can't make the motion.
It is the one that begins right here.
Only out of necessity.
Or, in the first paragraph.
Okay. So the warrant article we will present on Monday is to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to pay costs of designing, relocating, constructing, originally equipping and furnishing a relocated and expanded Wentworth Hall, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Such facility to be located on property across from the current location of the Islington Library, and to determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, to take any action relative thereto.
I move we approve the language as just stated.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that's the only action you need from us, this one?
Correct. And now we have requests for funding.
Right, we have our business, right? Okay, so that ends the discussion of the draft land disposition agreement. We're now going to move on to the request for funding for appraisal and environmental study.
Page 61, it's over. Thanks, Karen.
So, Ellen, do you have any questions already?
Do you want to talk through this?
A little bit, just. Mike, I had a question for you. So where did the 6,500 come from? Because I made some calls, and they think it's low.
I think it's low. I got, I got a contract.
You do?
The guy's on contract, he's going to do it in the first week in April.
Okay.
And it's a person we've used many, many, many times for appraisals.
Yeah, because when I did some check, and they thought that it was probably closer to 10 than it is to 65, but that's the, that's.
So I'm getting a good price.
Project, okay.
The guy comes from Maine, but he originally was, I think he was in Norwood. He moved up to Maine.
So he's familiar.
He's familiar, he comes down here all the time, and I've used him many times.
Yeah, he knows the market, he knows.
He knows the market. He does good work.
Okay, so the purpose of this proposed action is to authorize the town administrator to spend $6,500 to contract with a third-party appraiser to conduct an official appraisal of the town-owned properties in Islington. The purpose of the appraisal is to provide the town with an updated assessment of the value of the properties, separate from the assessed values presented in various meetings. The expectation is that the appraisal indicate a higher, more current purchase price of the property.
And I would say it's really not a purchase price, but a market value. He's doing a market value analysis, right?
Right.
And do you know what valuation approach he's planning to use?
Uh, he's.
Is it just straight land value, or?
No, it's the highest and best-use value.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but, okay. Okay. I move that we approve the transfer of $6,500 from the selectman's reserve account to cover the cost of both the appraisal for the town, both the appraisal and environmental study for the town properties in Islington Center.
I'll second.
Well, the environmental study, if you, if we want to go forward with that, that now is.
Okay. I amend the motion to just be the cost of the appraisal.
Appraisal, yeah.
On that motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Any comments, thoughts, questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none.
So what's the environmental study? Is this part of the agenda description?
You know.
Do we need, we're not taking any action on that today?
I'm not going to ask you to take action on that now. I'm going to talk to Garrett and bring, probably bring something back on Monday to your meeting.
You're going to another agenda item, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, sure.
So the environmental study, is that separate from the planned Conservation Commission?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with, yeah. That's, that's a wet, yours is a wetlands issue, ours, or the Conservation Commission is a wetlands issue. What I'm, what we're looking at is soil samples underground.
Any other questions?